We'll reconvene the Parker Town Council for April 19th at 7:00 PM. All council members are present. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I didn't wait. Our first item on the agenda is public comments. Just as a reminder, public comments can be made in two ways, one via Zoom and one via an email to the town clerk's office before 5:00 on the date of each meeting. We do have two items for public comment tonight from Steve Kaur and Lisa Cypher that will be added to tonight's agenda minutes. Do we have anybody on for public comment for items not on the agenda?
If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to comment. No comments.
No comments? Okay, then we will continue on with reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. I will start to my right with Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Mayor. Parker Senior Center has a shoe drive this Saturday as a fundraiser from 9:00 to noon at Parker Senior Center. I had a meeting, an orientation meeting with Douglas County Youth Initiative, one of my liaison boards. Also Centennial Airport Community Noise Roundtable. I'm part of the Community Outreach Committee, and we're doing the website. And finally, since it was so much fun, we've continued the Bo show. We had lunch with Indochina owner Yumi, talking all things economic development, and it's so much fun. Maybe do a Food Network show, I don't know. We'll see about that.
Nice. That would be the one to do it, too. Councilmember Pogue.
Okay, well, the Douglas County Housing Partnership canceled a meeting for this past week, so we'll see what happens next month. But then I also attended the CML Policy Committee, which is reviewing all of the bills affecting municipalities that are pending in the state legislature. There are several that are affecting law enforcement, and so I forwarded those over because I really think that we need to look at these from the perspective of our law enforcement, what's their take on them. And so I sent it on over to Jamie and to Kristen to have them review that and get back to us on it.
Excellent. Anything else for you, Cheryl?
Nope.
All right. Councilmember Diak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, going back to the seventh, Dr. Cog, I had my executive meeting before the work session that was, the executive meeting is just where the executive team gets together with the executive director and talks about operational updates as well as future agenda items. The work session that night largely was around the presentation by Senator Winter and Representative Gray on the draft legislation for transportation funding. I believe that is the much-talked-about bill over fees that has not dropped yet or been awarded a number, so more to be determined. Also asked to present the prestigious John V. Christensen Award to a, from a Dr. Cog standpoint, that's the most, again, the most prestigious award that Dr. Cog gives out. It is for a person to be named later. It will be unveiled at our Dr. Cog Awards Ceremony, I think at the end of the month, the 27th, if I'm not correct, if I believe to be correct. Let's see here, E-470, April 8th, we had a board meeting. Let's see, some of the highlights are we approved the Sable Interchange, Sable Boulevard Interchange relocation from Potomac. That's up in Adams County. We approved a road widening consultant that is FHU or Felsberg, Uhlvig, Holt, or Felsberg, Holton, Uhlvig, my apologies. We also had a couple of presentations by the Operations Department, the annual accident analysis. The big takeaway is zero deaths on the tollway last year. And then we had a customer service briefing. A lot of metrics, but it looks like, you know, based on the people that they talked about, that there is a pretty positive overall customer satisfaction. There were a number of different subcategories there. Let's see, April 13th, Douglas County Commissioners, in their consent agenda, approved additional funding so they could partner with the town of Parker for the Dransfeld Road Extension. That's, let's see, an additional $250,000, so we can continue design on that, and hopefully we can get to construction somewhere 2022, 23, if I remember correctly. And yes, I'm getting the nod. All right. And today, finally, I had a prep meeting. I am going to be chairing the Finance Budget Audit Committee Work Session at E-470. I had a discussion with the auditors. The KPMG audit results were delivered to the chair, that would be me. We talked through it and see if there are any concerns that I was aware of, or any issues that I was aware of. And none to report, very clean audit, and that is into my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hefta.
I don't think I can top that, by the way. John, that's a very busy week. So I did attend the Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority meeting. At that meeting, there was a request for CR 72 rulemaking hearing. There was a Parker letter of support by Rebecca Tehada, professional engineer of the Parker Water Sanitation District. And this would state that naturally occurring groundwater within the Cherry Creek watershed to which no nutrients or chemicals were added should not be subject to a TP limit of .05 milligram. So this is a technical matter, but there is support from the town of Parker on this, on this matter, to the Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority to change that, the rule on that, Rule 72. And also, again, the Southeast Christian Restart Board has continued to award money to local businesses in Parker, and again, as advertised by our own town administrator, Michelle Kivela.
Thank you, ma'am. And for me, just a couple of things. I attended a meeting with, again, the Bo show, the Bo Martinez Show, out with Parker Ed Venis, with Mike Goble. We'll, Bo and I will be visiting the top 10 largest businesses here in Parker, hearing economic development ideas, talking about private partnerships and public partnerships, and where we can fit in with them, so that was very good. I'll also be leading a contingency down to the state Capitol tomorrow to testify on HB 211252, which is the Parker's exit from RTD, so we'll keep you posted on how that goes. And also, some of you may heard, we have a special election tomorrow, April 20th, where we'll be electing two new council members. So if you're listening and haven't voted yet, please do your research, go vote. Very small turnout, so every vote counts and every vote will really matter. But for this council, it would be good to have all of our six council members here so we can do the people's business and get on with it. So that's it for me. Next item up, item number four, Town Administrator's Report. Looks like we have our spring report, although it doesn't look quite like spring out there right now, but anything to add to your report? Great. And they can find that online, correct?
Yes.
Excellent. Excellent. Item number five is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no specific discussion on consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for an individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will be removed, will not be removed for discussion. And consent agenda items for the public can be found on our website. So council, you have items 5A through 5D for your review.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve consent agenda items 5A through 5E. Is that what you said? My apologies.
5D?
5D, thank you.
I'll second that.
And Pogue, it's been moved by Councilmember Diak, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Please vote when your screen pops up. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. So the item number six, public hearings, the Parker Homestead filing number one amid one tract A used by special review. Stacy Nergur is back with us tonight.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. All right, so this evening, the applicant is requesting a use by special review to allow for a gas station in Parker Homestead, which is also known as heirloom. A use by special review is a discretionary request to determine whether or not the proposed use meets or can meet the nine approval criteria within the town's land development ordinance. A use by special review does not include review of specific development standards like architecture, lot layout, and landscaping. These items will be reviewed through a subsequent site plan submittal. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Chambers Road and Double Angel Road. The site is located within the mixed-use neighborhood center planning area of the Parker Homestead Plan Development. The subject site was annexed into the town of Parker in 2010 as part of the Parker Homestead property. In 2013, the property was platted as tract day of the Parker Homestead filing one, First Amendment plat. In 2019, a replat was submitted to the town to divide tract day into five commercial lots in one tract. This replat is still under review. The applicant is requesting a use by special review to allow a gas station convenience store on the property. The proposed Parker Homestead mixed-use commercial area is currently vacant. The area immediately surrounding the commercial area is a Douglas County School District Stadium to the east, open space with existing residential to the west, and existing residential to the north and south. The subject property is located within the neighborhood center character area of the town of Parker's master plan. Neighborhood centers are areas that should contain uses that serve the basic needs of the surrounding residents. A gas station convenience store is consistent with the Parker 2035 master plan and the goals and strategies of this plan. The applicant is proposing to construct a convenience store, gasoline pumps, car wash, and liquor store on the property. All uses are permitted by right except for the sale of gasoline or the gas pumps, which requires a use by special review. The conceptual site plan locates the gasoline pumps on the eastern portion of the property to help screen the use from the surrounding residential located to the south and west. During the site plan process, the town will review the proposed use against the town land development ordinance and development design standards to ensure the layout of the lot, as well as lighting, landscaping, parking, setbacks, height, and architecture are all satisfied. In addition, staff has added a condition of approval requiring the applicant to add enhanced landscaping along the southern and western edges of the site to help mitigate any negative impacts to the existing residential lots. The commercial component of the Parker Homestead development will be served by a private spine roadway that will connect Double Angel Road to Chambers Road with a second private roadway connecting Pelican Street to the spine roadway. Pelican Street on the south side of the site was intended for and constructed to serve both the residential and commercial components of this planning area. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a use by special review. These criteria ensure that the use is consistent with the surrounding area, will not result in an over-intensive use of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. After evaluating the information provided by the applicant for the use by special review, staff has determined that the requested use meets the nine approval criteria set forth in the land development ordinance. The proposed gas station will bring in added service to this area of Parker. The impacts created by the proposed gas station can be mitigated by enhanced landscaping and/or buffering the proposed use along the western and southern boundaries. All local, state, and federal requirements for gas stations will be required. All referral agency comments have been addressed. The public notice requirements have been satisfied. The Planning Commission heard this application on April 8th, 2021, and recommended unanimous approval. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that town council approve the Parker Homestead filing one, First Amendment, tract day, used by special review to allow a gas station, subject to the four conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is available tonight and does have a presentation for you as well, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Great, so let's take a moment for staff real fast. Any questions? I'll start to my right. Todd?
Yes, the president.
Okay. Councilmember Pogue?
Yes, too. I'm fairly familiar with this, but I haven't been down it yet, but I'm wondering, are there any neighboring areas with existing uses by, you know, what's been allowed in this area?
Okay, explain that again, neighboring uses that have...
Well, anything with zoning that would be similar to this type of use in this area.
Within this area. So as you go down Chambers Road, you get closer to Hess. That same area, Hess and Chambers, is also within a neighborhood center of the master plan, which you do have commercial uses located adjacent to residential. There's a plat that was recently approved. It's called Douglas 234. So you have the commercial area that's directly adjacent to residential houses. There are more throughout the town as well that you'll find. Trying to think of them off the top of my head, but that's the first one.
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, if we're going to be in the future overpopulating this type of use by using, going through this process tonight.
To allow for the gas station or for the zoning?
Right, for the gas station.
The gas station is a use permitted by special review, so it is one of those things that we can look at, the impacts that it might have. The nine criteria, I've listed a few of them, which staff has reviewed and does believe that they are satisfied.
I think the concern is, will there be other competing gas stations developed in the area?
There could be. There is a gas station proposed at Douglas 234. We do have other gas stations, and gas stations can look at other lots within the area that are currently vacant.
Okay. And the other question, have we gotten anything from the neighbors for or against this application?
So I have not received any comments personally. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting, and two of the neighbors did attend, and they, their concerns were really mitigating the impacts of a gas station in that area. So lighting, making sure there's no spillage of lights, noise, those sort of impacts, and so that's where the condition of approval for enhanced landscaping, that's why that was added.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Diak?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This actually might be a John Fusa question, but it relates to, I think, this, this application. I want to make sure John gets his steps in, so that's figured why I call him out before. He's the very back for those people who aren't here, which, nobody's here, so. So, you know, at the regional level, we, you know, we talk to Dr. Cog about air quality and stuff, you know, charging stations. There's a, there's a House Bill 19-1261, which indicates a reduction of pollution to reduce emissions by 90% by 2050. Where I'm going with this is that, you know, these charging stations seem to be becoming more prevalent. I've been told by Boulder County elected officials that Douglas County has more electric cars per capita than Boulder County. I did not know that. So, you know, with that, I'm just trying to get a, you know, looking forward, do they have enough electric capacity to provide charging stations or convert those gas terminals in the future to EV charging stations? I'm just thinking way, way ahead here.
Bringing you the fuzzy thing.
Yes. Mr. Fusa, you have the floor for the next half hour.
So Councilmember Diak, good question. That is the future. We can see it on the horizon.
Yeah.
It's not here yet, although maybe it's closer than we sometimes think it is. That question or that issue is beyond the scope of this application.
Yeah.
And the decision that the council has to make on it.
Yeah.
I think it's an outstanding topic for further discussion, and including, we will, we have in our community development work plan this year to scope out, develop a scope of work for a master plan update, which we would, subject to further discussion and funding, commence in 2022. And I think, at least as to the transportation element of the Parker 2035 master plan and any update, that would be a very good topic for that vehicle and mechanism.
Yeah, I mean, where I was going is that with, it seems like there's, there's more than a few of these gas stations, and with, with it being in the future, I didn't know if there was sort of an ask, or maybe just the applicant can articulate, yeah, we've identified, and we're, we're bringing in power, and there's enough there to, to create that option. I, I know it's, it's borderline not within the scope, but it seems, the future seems relevant now because if you don't plan...
So I can tell you, it's definitely not in the scope of this application.
Yeah.
It's not borderline, it's not. The, you know, I think that's one of those issues where the government's looking to at least incentivize that issue.
Yeah.
But, right, the market still speaks.
Yeah.
And so today, the market is for gasoline or diesel-fueled vehicles.
Yeah.
So the market is speaking. And with all the population growth and, and commercial growth we have, that's why these proposals, of which we have several submitted and under review, are being processed and proposed because the market still sees an opportunity to meet a need and serve, serve a customer base.
We have one item on the, on the agenda, so that this was...
Don't stretch it out.
This was one of those things I figured I'd throw out there, you know, to me, I just, just interested as to how that plays in, and I guess, like, as you said, it's not within the scope. My apologies, Stacy.
And what I would say is, lastly, just at the risk of belaboring it more, they will be bringing in commercial-grade power.
Okay.
So in all likelihood, there will be an opportunity to convert over, because you can run a 220 line into your home, which has residential service, and plug in your vehicle, so they'll have more than enough.
You should have led with that, John. That would have just shut me down. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Hefta, questions?
And I, yes, I can appreciate John's comments because I, for one, enjoy the use of my single occupancy vehicle to get here, and I know that area quite well. There is a church in that area. There is up the road, a storage facility. So there's a ball field, and there's numerous homes on that road. And a lot of folks coming from the south on Chambers and Hess and Mostenbacher have no access to a gas station if they're coming up that way. And so I'd love to hear what the applicant has to say tonight, but I would just like to add that bit of information, that it would appear on its face to be a needed service in that area.
Great, thanks, council. Stacy, would you like to introduce the applicant? And Danette, are you ready to promote him up?
Yes, they're all promoted.
Okay.
All right, and I'll go ahead and let them take over.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity to present our proposal today. And could somebody confirm that I am audible, please?
We can, we can hear you, but, but it's rough. If you can get closer to the microphone. And then would you, would you introduce yourself, give your name and address for the record?
I will do that. Let me adjust my microphone, just put in a minute here.
Did we lose him?
Nope. I still see him on there. Did we...
I hope this is better.
The sound went lower.
Went lower? Okay. Let me go back to the previous device. I apologize if this...
That's perfect, that's perfect.
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much, and, and sorry for that confusion a little bit. As I was saying, I would like to start off with a brief overview of our ownership. We are six residents of Colorado, two of them make homes in Parker. Our business focuses on developing and operating commercial properties for neighborhood retail stores, and collectively, we have over 70 years of experience in this business. We own two neighborhood retail stores in the Denver area. First of those, we started in 2010 at Main Street and Jordan in Parker. The second one, we started in early 2017 in Aurora. Here is a, just a refresher, the orange rectangular site is the one under consideration right now. Here is a blow-up of that, that site, since Tracy already provided the details, I'm not going to go into these again here, but if you are, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. I would like to start by stating why we believe this business is right for this location. Some statistics, please note that the numbers are based on Google and approximate. And, you know, all the necessities such as groceries, milk bread, gas, gasoline, liquor store are about five miles round trip for this neighborhood, and the car wash is about seven miles round trip away. So I think our, our neighborhood retail store is, is a good fit for that, this location, and will serve this neighborhood very well. I want to address some of the concerns related to gasoline pumps. I want, I want to highlight the fact that our design is consistent with town of Parker master plan, as Tracy mentioned, and the gasoline use is under review right now. Other than that, the convenience store is permitted use. And as you can see here, only 10% of our site is for buildings, so I hope that reassures everyone that this proposed site will not result in over-intensive use of the land. About the traffic concerns, I want to, I hope this picture portrays that there are two commercial entrances to this site, one on Chambers Road and one on Double Angel. Those two roads are connected through an interior circulation road. In addition, the gasoline pumps are located sufficiently far enough away from the Chambers Road entrance to generate easy in and out traffic flow at the Chambers Road entrance. Also, the gasoline station is located closest to the Chambers Road entrance, which likely means that customers will use the Chambers Road entry to enter and exit for their gas fill-up. I would like to show some statistics from, a brief excerpt from the traffic studies, the first of which was conducted in 2011. It was updated in 2018. As you can see here, the numbers that were updated in 2018 are close to, are, you know, smaller than the ones that were recorded in 2011. So the second update actually is a little bit better because it assumes more specific mix of uses on this site. And regarding air, water, and noise pollution, the architecture and site design will be designed, will be designed to meet the town of Parker's design requirements, which address these concerns. And it will be adequately landscaped, designed by professional architects. The building design and building exterior will meet the town of Parker's requirements. There will be a 75-foot buffer between the pumps and Chambers Road. The retail building will be positioned to act as buffer between this site and residential neighbors. And regarding the health, safety, or welfare concerns, once again, the site is designed to meet the town of Parker's requirements, I should say will be designed, which in turn address these concerns. Also, I want to point out, the gasoline pumps have four major safety features, as listed here. And the gasoline pumps and fueling equipment are designed and manually inspected to meet the state of Colorado requirements, which in turn are designed to protect the health the first of which was conducted in 2011. It was updated in 2018. As you can see here, the numbers that were updated in 2018 are close to, are, you know, smaller than the ones that were recorded in 2011. So the second update actually is a little bit better because it assumes more specific mix of uses on this site. And regarding air, water, and noise pollution, the architecture and site design will be designed, will be designed to meet the Town of Parker's design requirements, which address these concerns. And it will be adequately landscaped, designed by professional architects. The building design and building exterior will meet the Town of Parker's requirements. There will be a 75-foot buffer between the pumps and Chambers Road. The retail building will be positioned to act as buffer between this site and residential neighbors. And regarding the health, safety, or welfare concerns, once again, the site is designed to meet the Town of Parker's requirements, I should say will be designed, which in turn address these concerns. Also, I want to point out the gasoline pumps have four major safety features, as listed here. And the gasoline pumps and fueling equipment are designed and manually inspected to meet the state of Colorado requirements, which in turn are designed to protect the health and safety of the public. Regarding parking, there will be adequate parking for the gasoline pumps. The landscaping, as I said, will have a 75-foot buffer separating it from the adjacent Chambers Road. No vertical structures will be built in this 75-foot buffer. Mitra will work with the Town of Parker to ensure all requirements are met. And we will also ensure that the lighting is directional and not dispersional. It will be shaded and focused directly on the site, and it will minimize glare from the site. And so we, this image shows actually the property owners who are located within the 803 from our project site, and all of them were notified about this proposed development. There were three separate invitations for public comments. The first one was the community meeting we had with the property owners, adjacent property owners. And a public hearing sign was posted on the property, and the public hearing's notice was sent by registered mail. We did receive some comments, two property owners provided comments. And the two property owners asked that lighting from the project be mitigated as much as possible. And I, I will state again that we are committed to working with City of Parker designers to ensure that not only the lighting, but also the landscaping and noise concerns are met. And if you allow me, I will address, I think it was councilmember, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing this name incorrectly, Dyak. And Councilwoman Hefta, I believe, that brought up the electric vehicles and electric charge. We are very excited to hear that. We are, you know, very enthusiastic about the electrification future. Many of us, as probably as you also have electric vehicles. And we will work with the Town of Parker to accelerate our plans to install electric vehicle charging stations as soon as possible. We are ready.
Excellent, thanks, sir. Mr. Goodvali, do you have anybody else that you want added in on your presentation? Or does that conclude your presentation?
That, that does conclude my presentation.
Okay, then I am going to go for questions for the applicant. I'm going to start with my left councilmember, sorry, Hefta. You're both over there, whoever wants.
Yes. Sir, could you bring up the last slide about the public comment, the public hearing?
I am not ready yet.
Yeah, the very, the one before it ended. Yeah. Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, thank you. Just wanted to touch base on this slide right here. I noticed that you invited the property owners to a project presentation that was held online on March 11th. And that was the first invitation for public comment. I also noticed that you invited a public hearing, there was a public hearing sign that was posted on the property with Parker's phone number. And then I also noticed that you had a public hearings notice sent in the mail to 71 nearby property owners by registered mail with Parker's phone number. So again, I would, I'd like to applaud you for sending that notice to 71 nearby property owners by registered mail, because I think that was a very good step that you took in notifying the local neighborhoods of this project. So from this notice, could you, again, just clearly state any feedback that you received from the property owners in the area?
Certainly. And Mon, one of my partners is also here, he can add if I am missing anything. In addition to the lighting that was brought up during the, during that presentation, there were several questions about the traffic, about the noise, and what we would do to address those concerns. And I believe there was also concerns, the public safety, the impact of gasoline discharge, accidental gasoline discharge on the property. And, you know, as we stated, we will, we are committed to working with the Town of Parker in any mitigations that they will recommend. And, you know, we have a, an excellent team of general contractors and architects that help us, that have helped us with our two other gas stations. And we will, we will do whatever is required to get the Town of Parker's approval.
Councilmember Dyak.
No questions, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Polk?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I'll just also echo councilmember Hefta's words about the public outreach. I think that's a good thing. Would love to, I'm excited to see what the site plan has. Hopefully, I know the concerns with noise and light pollution for, is, on people's minds, but since you're openly addressing this, I believe this is a good addition. I know that area of Parker has little amenities, so that's it.
Great, thank you. So with that, we will go to the public hearing portion of this. I will go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:35. Anyone wishing to, you can indicate by raising your hand on Zoom. Or, Danette, do we have anyone calling in tonight?
Nobody calling in.
Okay, so raise your hand on Zoom and Danette can promote you. Danette, do we have anybody for public hearing?
We do. Travis is here.
Great, Travis, when Danette promotes you, if you will state your first and last name and your address for the record, and then we'll give you three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So if you'll state your first and last name for the record and your address.
My name's Travis Downey. And I live at 1168678 Jutland Street in the Heirloom neighborhood, across from this proposed site.
Great, go ahead with your comments, sir.
Well, I first wanted to address, I guess, the public notice that was sent out. So we did receive it by mail. However, it was a written Zoom link with no passcode, so only two of the neighbors were able to attend, me and, and our neighbor here. So we, we don't feel like that was the proper, we weren't given the proper notice because nobody could get into that actual Zoom meeting.
Great, Travis, any further comments?
I also feel like this proposed law is not the greatest. So I am the closest house to, to this lot, and I feel like the, the applicant has been somewhat deceptive in some of the info that they've been giving out. When I originally attended their meeting, they said my house, the closest house, was 600 feet away in the, I guess, the notice of public hearing. Now it's saying 380 feet away. So that's, that's, that's less than half of what they originally told us. I also had the opportunity to visit some of their already developed sites, one in Denver on Havana in Kentucky. They said they did a really good job of landscaping and protecting the neighbors there. I highly disagree. They put six-foot pine trees in spaced about four feet from each other. No, there is no light mitigation whatsoever.
All right, thank you, Travis, appreciate that. Next up, Danette, do we have anyone else for public comment?
There are no other attendees.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment at 7:37. And we mandate back to the council, start to my left this time, I think I did. Councilmember Dyak, questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just to follow up on the citizens' issue, maybe the applicant can kind of go into, or Stacy, applicant, you think? The, the landscaping and light mitigation issues, maybe Stacy's probably the best one. Thank you, sorry.
No worries, thank you. So we haven't seen anything for this site yet, and we will be reviewing it as part of the site plan application. The town's codes for lighting landscaping are pretty thorough. One of the things for lighting is that you can't have over one-foot candle at your property lines. So all lights have to be shielded. There's no light spill as it is. So we will be looking at that closely to make sure that that is included, with the condition of approval for the enhanced landscaping on the western and southern boundaries. We don't know exactly what that'll look like yet, but it could be berm to help raise up that property, to help screen a review. It could be the incorporation of evergreen trees with deciduous trees to provide for that year-round cover. It is something we will look at during the site plan.
So, so just to be clear, that, that the, the concerns of the applicant will be addressed at a later touch point, the, the site plan review, which is not the scope of this.
Correct.
And with that, the Town of Parker has certain criteria that applicant would need to adhere to. So if, if something was not done, you know, done well someplace else, we cannot speak to that because their standards may be different than ours.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hefta.
Yes. I just would like to hear from Mr. Maloney on, on meeting the criteria in this case and what his thoughts are.
Well, with any use by special review, it is a use that's listed in the, the development guide and plan. It's just a type of use that's more intense, and therefore you need some level of mitigation. I think that's part of the discussion on the lighting and the landscaping. And as has been discussed, we're just talking about the use, not what the use looks like. That's going to be part of a separate land use approval called the site plan. So I mean, based upon my review of the analysis that staff put together and as part of the planning commission report, it does appear that there is some competent evidence in the record to support a finding that a use by special review could be approved.
Thank you.
Anything else for you? Councilmember Polk?
Yes, Mr. Maloney. And possibly Stacy. When we look at this particular use on this site, is it consistent with what else is going to be added to the site as far as the other lots go?
So I'll take this one. Looking at the land use, so this area is in the mixed-use neighborhood center of the Parker Homestead Plan Development. It lists different commercial uses, retail, standard commercial uses that you'd see. So retail services, those sort of things. There was a proposal south of the site for the gun range or shooting range that was approved. They have not started construction on it. That's the only one we currently have that was proposed. No other lots have had submittals yet. But they could be a fast food establishment, a restaurant, a retail store, any of your service entities too.
So in essence, it is consistent to the other anticipated use.
Correct.
On the site.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, like, like others, I'm curious what the site plan will look like. Hopefully, this would be aesthetically pleasing, hopefully pronounce that correctly. But since this is a use by special review, I, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Excellent. Council, any further comments, questions of the applicant staff? Okay, if none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, before you close the, the meeting on this particular item, the town clerk wants to make sure that you did open the public hearing at 7:10. I thought you did.
Not, not, I, not at 7:10.
Okay.
I, so it was, I closed it at 7:37, so probably 7:35?
Okay.
Thank you. And now we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Homestead, Parker Homestead filing one AMD one tract A, use by special review on second reading.
Great, is there a second?
I'll second.
Then moved by Councilmember Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Please vote when indicated to do so.
And Mayor, can I clarify that motion?
Yes, yes.
I, I thought I heard a second reading and I.
Yeah, so my, I was doing on the fly, Jim.
Okay, and I don't remember four conditions or anything like that.
So please, if, if I may, can I amend my motion?
Absolutely. So let's start with, let's withdraw the prior motion.
Yeah.
And then you can make a new motion.
All right, I would like to withdraw the prior motion. We need a second, Jim, on that.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much, okay. My apologies to everybody. I was, I was doing it on the agenda. I did not go into the, the notes, which the staff so expertly provides. The motion should be, I move to approve based upon staff findings with the following four conditions contained in the staff report.
I'll second.
All right, it is continued to be moved and amended by Councilmember Dyak and seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Please vote. And that motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, ordinance number 9.136.4, a second reading, has already been continued from the March 22nd meeting, and it's been asked to continue to the June 7th meeting. Mr. Maloney, do you have anything to add to that before we move that?
If it's not ready to go by the June 7th meeting, then I'm going to request it to be continued indefinitely.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to move that to June 7th?
So I, I opened the, the staff report this time, Mr. Mayor. I would like to offer the motion of I move to continue ordinance number 9.134.4 to June 7th, 2021, for second reading.
I second.
Then moved by Councilmember Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Please vote when indicated to do so.
Did that come through twice?
Looks like it.
Weird. Hold on, I didn't get anything.
Might have.
I have it now. Hold on. Thank you.
He'll get the hang of it.
And that motion passes unanimously. With no other business before the Parker Town Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn the April 19th Town Council meeting at 6:40, or 7:46.
I'll second.
Great, it's been moved by Councilmember Polk, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks, the last vote of the night.
Oh my God, can we just, there you go.
You want to do a voice?
Yeah, because I just shut it off.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Sure.
Councilmember Polk?
Yes.
Councilmember Dyak?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefta, and that motion passes, and we are adjourned at 7:46.